All right, let's get right into our new business, Mr. Brandon Sanders.
Good morning.
Morning.
Do you have a couple of packets for you? Okay, the first thing I'd like to talk to you about is the, our Bridge 701 on South D Street. Construction is underway on that one. We ran into an issue with the patching underneath of the bridge. There is a substantial cost overrun on that. When they went in to start marking those areas for the laminated concrete, failed concrete, and they go in and they jackhammer it out and get down to the steel reinforcement. Those areas have grown slightly bigger than what was originally designed. And when you add up all three of the main arches, all the pier work, it's got a substantial cost overrun on that one. So the first packet that I gave you, we talked to our bridge designers about what can we do to try to have some cost savings come back into the project? What items can we eliminate and still get the product that we want? They presented us with two options. So the first sheet on your packet is option number one. That is just patching the areas on the arches only, not the areas of the piers. And you can see in the spreadsheet that they provided, some of the cost-saving measures that they suggested was possibly moving the pedestrian safety fence, which that cost is about $220,000 to install that. We did have a, the bridge deck patching line item. When they mil, hydro demo, hydro demoed the deck, there were areas that they did not need to do a full-depth patch on. So there was a cost savings of $112,000 on that. So that's coming back, back to us. Another item was the fiber wrap concrete item. So when they, when they do a deck pat, or a patch on the arches or the piers, if they don't have to go back behind the rebar, it is a recommended and standard procedure to do a fiber wrap on the front to further protect that patch from popping out at a later time. A lot of these patches that they're seeing now, they, they have been going back behind the rebar. So now the new concrete can go behind it and, you know, securely anchored to it. So our bridge designer thought that we could remove that item. And that item was $268,000. So all in all, on the first option that they presented, if we don't do the safety fence, there could be a credit of $63,000 to our project. If we do the safety fence, it would cost us $157,000 for option, in additional money for option number one. They also presented us with option number two, which is the next page. And that is going through and patching all of the bad areas under the arches, as well as patching the failed areas on the piers. Now, option one, they were removed patching areas of the piers because those are more aesthetics. It's not structural damage just yet. My recommendation to the commissioners last week was to proceed with option two because if we've got to come back in five or 10 years to patch the piers, there's going to be mobilization, demobilization costs, and it's ultimately going to cost more than having the contractors out there right now. They're already set up to do it. It's just, it's going to be an additional expense. So looking at this, you know, if we don't do the safety fence, it's going to be an additional $221,000. If we do the safety fence, it's going to be an additional $443,000. I know Jeff has been working with the Richmond schools to see if they could help fund a portion of the safety fence, but we have not heard back from them at this time. So what I'm coming to counsel today for is to either choose option one or two. The commissioners recommended to proceed with option two, do all the patching, since we're already geared up for that. And then we would come back later and address the safety fence issue when we hear back from the school system.
Can I ask you, what, what does the safety fence do? I mean, what, what it, what does it do actually?
Well, it, so it's in the close proximity of Richmond High School. There's a lot of student traffic on that bridge, you know, commuting to school and going home. It was brought up by the school system at the time of the design, five years ago, to further help protect the students. There has been a few emergency management calls to that bridge on suicide attempts and, you know, just other people on the bridge railing and stuff like that. So it was brought up to help protect the students and other public crossing that bridge.
It, it wouldn't be to protect them from traffic, but to protect them from going over...
Correct, yes, yes.
Climbing over the railing.
Climbing over.
But there, there's no data indicate that those calls for service, someone sitting on the edge of the bridge that we've seen for years are students.
I, I don't know that data. I know Donnie Benedict did a study five years ago, and I think there was only in the span of 15 years, there's only two actual suicide attempts or deaths. So that is one of the reasons why we went ahead with the design of it. But seeing the, the $1.2 million that we spent at the beginning of the year to get this project going, and now the additional expense with the patching, that was just an item that our bridge designers thought that, you know, could save the county some money, focus on preserving the historic structure.
Where do you propose this extra $200,000?
We, I've been going through with the bridge fund, and we, we have the funding in there to absorb that cost. So I would, I would recommend just asking for an additional appropriation to use the bridge fund to pay for it.
And that's the commissioner's recommendation as well.
If we do that, how's that affect the other bridge projects coming up?
Okay. So, so in your packet, I, I did, the pages two through five are, are just some examples. Page three just kind of shows a couple of areas of the piers that would not be patched if we went with option one. And then the, the last two pages kind of show the areas that they've already removed the laminated concrete. And then there's, the last page shows the areas of, that they're going to remove that are marked for removal. But to answer your question, Max, on the next packet that I had for you, the first page is our remaining federal projects. And the, the funding shortage column on the right kind of shows you a breakdown of the additional money that the county will need to provide to move these projects along. So the, the next project that bids next week is our Sample Road project. And there's a shortage of $643,000 on that project. And this is, just to remind you, this is due to the inflation and not, not able to match the 80/20 that they originally said. That is now down to like a 60/40 or 50/50 because they're not able to provide the additional funding for the increased construction cost. So, so for the Sample Road project, I'm proposing to use the bridge fund to cover that shortage. But going into next year for our four remaining projects in 2025 and 26, we will need to try to find that shortage from another source because the bridge fund will not be able to absorb that. The second page that I have in that packet, the, the first row is our, our current projection for the end of the year. I do know we do have two more projects outside of Sample this year, the Heine Road Bridge, which goes to Letting in October, and the Richmond Avenue Bridge, bridges, there's two, the one over Sheridan Street and then the one over the corridor, lets in December. So if the bridge fund was to absorb the Heine Road Project, Sample Road Project, you're, you're looking at a end-of-the-year balance of $900,000 roughly in the bridge fund. Now, if we pay for the, the option two, the extra patch, not the extra patch, but the patching the arches and the piers, that, that number will drop down to $700,000.
Does that balance already have the match for the original 8% out of it?
Yes, it does. Yeah, that, that counts all of the...
So that's net money that's available?
Correct. The second row was kind of like a wish list. I, I had some options of, you know, additional funding sources broken out over the next three years, if, if that is something that could be provided to the bridge fund to help these projects and to keep our balance, you know, up around $2 million. When you get down to, you know, $500, $600,000, that's, if there's an emergency or something that, you know, you're losing your buffer, I guess you could say. But for the rest of the projects that aren't letting this year, I feel the bridge fund could absorb them. That's just the, the balance that you're going to see if we did.
Since this is a totally, well, basically unexpected, we knew it was going to happen for a while, but what about using some of the ARPA money to make up that gap?
Max, I think we can do that. That's one option. The commissioners voted to support the bridge fund supporting these projects, this, this current one, the G Street Bridge, as well as the next one that's going out to bid this month, or letting this month. That gives us some time until October, when we have a better handle on what the budget will be and how much available resources we have to make decisions on where the funding should come from. It's, it's, remember, we use the bridge fund that's dedicated to bridges. This gives us more flexibility with preserving some of the other funds that can be used for bridges, but don't, doesn't have to be. So we think this is the way to go, use the bridge fund for these two projects. That gives us until October to make a decision on the additional $750,000 for the next bridge, which is Heine Road. And, and we can talk in much more detail about the best locations for that to come from, could be part of it from ARPA. Remember, there's about $450,000 that is still uncommitted. But as I sent you a list of potential projects to be funded out of that money and then some, so we're going to need to go into the general fund. Could potentially be a situation where we want to spend some of the money out of rainy day. We have options, we have options. And this gets us through the, this month, allows you to get, take a deep dive into the budget, and we don't have to make the next decision on where additional dollars would come from until October.
My thought kind of was that, you know, we've got to have the ARPA money allocated by the end of the year.
Correct.
This is the thing that would be allocated immediately.
I understand you thought...
Reduce that risk on...
I understand you thought October is before the end of the year too, but wherever, wherever you guys want to go on, on these projects, you guys determine where, where you want to pay for these bridge projects. And we'll, we'll continue the conversation.
Brandon, looking ahead, can, is it an option to delay some of these bids on future bridges?
Yes, I have had talks with NDOT on, you know, how far can we push these out and try to secure some additional funding? And they are telling me that they would need to be pushed out by past 2030, so six, seven years.
2030?
2030. They, they have no additional funding to provide to any, not just us, but to anybody in the state until 2030. So, which your construction cost could be more and, but if you get more funding, that could offset it. So it's, it's just a gamble on, you know, what we want to do. If we want to push them out that far or not, you know.
If we would go with option two, then we would need to do an additional appropriation and advertise that and do it at another meeting?
Yeah, that's what I would recommend, that not making a decision on the fence, just the patching portions of the $220,000. But I would probably recommend maybe advertising $250, just a little bit more because these are still best estimates from the contractor. They still haven't removed everything yet, so that could flux a little bit. So having an additional appropriation of maybe $250 could help cover if it's just a little bit more than what, what I've...
I think, I think it makes sense to do option two, and I don't know if we need to take a vote or just have the additional appropriation. Are there other thoughts on that? Is everybody in agreement?
I'm in agreement with you on two. In the long run, I think we're ahead. What's the anticipated completion date of this project?
October the 15th, I think, of this year, but there's also an intermediate completion for the, the bridge deck and the above road work to be done by August before school starts. Yeah, so that, that will be done, but they'll still be underneath patch through October.
Yeah, I think it's definitely smart to go ahead and do the option two and not have to go back in in a few years, and then we'd just be funding the money then, and it'd probably cost more than it does now. Looks like next year, just for the two projects next year, we're looking at like $1.7 million. But we don't have to look at 26 yet, we just have to be thinking about it.
Correct.
But, and we do have a healthy rainy day, we've got options.
Maybe, maybe it would be good to go ahead and vote on option two and then just...
I think so, just because it's been brought to us as a...
I would make the motion that we'd go with option two.
Second, that's...
And do the additional appropriation.
And what...
And advertise for the additional appropriation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more questions?
Do we appropriate for $250,000?
$250,000 plus, Sebastian, the request was...
I thought $250 included them.
Did you say briefly?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, any other clarification?
Without the fence.
Without the fence, option two, $250,000. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Okay.
We will advertise that, and I don't know if we have enough time, Bobby.
It'll have to be next council.
Next council meeting on August 7th or whatever day it is.
Having a direction moved forward is what our contractors need, and we will settle up any cost overruns or credits at the end of the project, so we don't have to have it, you know, we don't have to have a check tomorrow, if that makes sense.
Okay, so we'll go at our first council meeting.
Just having the direction forward, so I appreciate that. I also just wanted to come back to the Sample Road project, which goes to Letting next week. Do we want to go ahead and advertise the additional appropriations to come out of the bridge funds for that one as well? That way, we don't have a similar situation about having special meetings to try to get the money paid. We can go ahead and start advertising for that. Sample Road will, that additional money will need to be paid upfront before the project starts.
Is that okay with everybody, that we go ahead and advertise for the next one also? Okay.
What amount? 765?
765, one...
It'll be the 643, so 650.
Oh, 30.
If you wanted to round out.
About $900,000 together, if you want to do one additional appropriation.
650 and 250, so.
I'll motion to add the Sample Road cost of around $643,707 in the additional.
Can we do 650?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
And that's all I have.
Okay, we got you taken here for now.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, Mike Sharp.
Good morning.
Morning. Back in the middle of June, we had a air conditioner go out. I think it was put in now the highway back in 1990. So I took it to commissioners. We went and hang out the air conditioner, and that was right before the last heat wave come through, so we want to keep the office people happy, you don't want to make them mad. So we went ahead and did it. I took it to commissioners to see if that could be paid out. I think there was $300,000 allocated to the Highway Department out of ARPA funds. If that could be inexpensive, we could pay all that, and they were like, they wanted me to take it to council and make sure that was okay to pay out of ARPA for that.
Was that extra from other projects we've been doing out there?
We appropriated an additional $300,000 of ARPA funds. One of the projects on that list is the, or another tank, the, the tank, and, and so they're working on that, but this, we think, can come out of that $300,000 if you all are okay. It wasn't specifically listed as one of the projects we was thinking about.
I didn't think so.
So how much? I didn't...
The price was $5,450, which replaced the unit on the top and the air handler in the, in the building itself.
I would move that you approve that. Second.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Thank you.
Is that all you need from us?
Yep.
Are your other things all going well, with your ARPA funds?
Yes, so the tanks are, the tanks have been set. We're getting them ready to, they, they were waiting on one other part, and then we can fill them, we're going to start using, we'll put diesel in them. We can, we got temporary stations set up to where they can pull out of that, and then they're planning on removing the old tanks out of the ground in August. So hopefully we won't have to transfer a lot of fuel from that point. Chloride tank, it's been ordered, the pad's been poured, so we're waiting for it to arrive, and then we can set it, we'll have to run electric for it and so forth. And then I've got a meeting on Monday with an engineer company to look at the extension of the pole barn and a wash bay onto the pole barn. So we're meeting on Monday on that, and then we're getting bids for the, quotes for the painting of the buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're moving, it's not there yet.
That's okay, it's, it's not a movement.
Stay cool, Mike.
You're right. Thank you.
Okay, up next is Debbie Berry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today as, at Clerk's Conference, there was a new bill that was passed for local government finance, House and Roll Act 1328, which is Indiana Code 371222, which gives the clerk a stipend of $2,500 in the election years with a primary election, which would be the even numbered years. The stipend would not be effective for the years that we have a municipal election or no election. So not only on behalf of this year that it became effective July the 1st, that it would be effective, but also for future election years with the primary election. Just wanted to make the board aware of that. An additional appropriation is what I would be requesting for this year, but then for it to be given a fine number, much like the clerk's per diem is, and be paid to future clerks, because this is my last year, so future clerks in the even numbered years of elections. That's it.
I read that statute, and it said that we may give it up to $2,500. So what, is there a reason you just are requesting that?
Well, at, at the Clerk's Conference, they said, and, you know, it was in addition to any current stipends in each two years, and I realize that the statute says that you may, so, you know, that is the council's pleasure, unless I'm interpreting that differently. But I wanted to bring it to your attention that, that was passed.
Does this present any additional work or whatever on the part of the clerk from what didn't happen in the past?
Uh, no.
I, I tend to have a problem with increasing salaries or compensation for elected officials. They know what the pace is for that job that they run. I'm not in favor of this.
I'm curious, Debbie, when, when they went, whoever took this to the legislature, what was their arguing point for having this? What was the...
Well, in all honesty, some clerks in the state did not get a stipend. You know, I'm here in Wayne County, I've been very fortunate because I do receive that per diem, which is for voter canvassing, getting, you know, poll workers, and, and it's a struggle. That part is a struggle. Sometimes we can't get even a number from both parties to work, and so then it's our duty to make sure that we assign someone. So it, it is some extra work, but some clerks in the state were not getting a per diem, you know, for, as, as I do.
I wondered, I thought, well, there had to be something, and the legislators wouldn't have voted for this, but I didn't know what that was.
Okay, thank you.
So did I hear you say, Debbie, you already receive a per diem?
I do get a per diem. Line num, line number in the 1,000 accounts, 13120, 2688 a year, and that is split up half after the spring election, after the primary, and half after the fall.
So then this request would be on top of that?
It would be in addition to that, is, is what the state statute reads.
I'd be inclined to agree with Gary, especially the fact that the clerk, and not Debbie, but the physician already receives a per diem, that we not increase that?
If we don't have a motion, we will just consider this dropped? There's no motion to proceed with this?
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to...
Thank you.
Gina Glass.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
I am here to ask for permission or approval to apply for a grant that we have applied for in years past through the Partnership of Drug Free Wayne County. I am asking to apply in the amount of $3,3,500. And this grant allows us to provide assistance to our clients, some of which are coming out of prison and have no personal belongings. So this grant allows us to help certain clients and individuals coming out of prison, prison with items such as personal hygiene items and things of that nature. Folks who don't have those basic necessity, basic items when they come out, it, it's often a barrier for them. So this grant has allowed us in years past to serve over, over 50 people in years past. So I would, I would ask permission to apply once again for this grant.
What do we, what do we typically receive as far as we're asked?
$2,000.
How much?
$2,000 is what we've received in years past in, for the grants.
Is it a match or full agreement?
It's, it's full.
Well, you know, this is one of the expressed categories in the statute for the use of those use of fees in criminal justice, so if they give you $2,000 or they give you $30,000, it's money that you can use for, for that program, for those... So if they give you two thousand or they give you thirty thousand, it's money that you can use for that program for those clients. I would make the motion to approve allowing Gina to apply to that grant from the partnership of Drug Free Wayne County.
You have a motion and a second by Kathy? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sheriff Rutter. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I came this morning to provide you with my semi-annual commissary report. If I can. Without going through this line by line, I will highlight that you'll note this was for a period of six months from January first, twenty twenty-four until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. There was a total of one hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-three cents in dispersments. And the current balance as of June thirtieth was two hundred thirty-two thousand four twenty-five and thirty-three cents.
Is the incoming money into that stay fairly consistent?
It has been, yeah. It changed a little bit when I changed vendors for the phone systems. But it has been pretty consistent. You also may note that I included an itemized listing of all of the dispersments and deposits for that six-month period.
So the equipment you buy out of here, is that like firearms and?
It can be, yeah. And the way the commissary is set up by statute, and I'm sure you recall, is to be used to supplement what comes out of general fund or what's distributed to our budget.
So all these other pages have the details?
Correct. Significant amount of that is allocated, well, not allocated, but distributed for training and other expenses related to that.
Typically, do you spend more than what you cut in or you, by the end of the year, you're about to break even?
Usually by the end of the year, break even, we kind of try to keep an eye on our expenses and try to manage that well. I think the reason that you're seeing a significant decrease in this six-month pay period, we just paid for one of the vehicles, which was a fifty thousand dollar expense. And that took a big chunk out of it.
Looks like you got a nice lady who gives people haircuts for ten dollars now. That's interesting.
What's your credit card rate?
Mine, well, more than you would think, right?
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate the detailed report that you provided here. More importantly, the willingness you have to use commissary money to supplement general fund for things that are really general fund obligations.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's good to me.
Thank you.
Well, you know, once you approve what you propose expenditures out of the commissary, I appreciate that too.
Thanks for giving us this and being upfront and showing us all the details. Appreciate that.
You bet. If there are no other questions, I do know that there was a question about twenty thousand dollars from a grant that we had received.
Yeah, I have that on here next. I didn't know if Alan was here to talk about that or you're just going to handle it?
He was, and I wanted to ask your recommendation, whether you wanted to do it before general counsel or for?
Can you explain the whole thing to us?
I can start and I'll probably defer to Alan for some of that. He led the charge on this grant. But this grant was from the Rural Violent Crime Initiative. And it initially was for a hundred and two thousand dollars, which helped us buy some drug recognition equipment that was truly state-of-the-art. We've used on several occasions. The two machines without going into great detail. One machine is a trace detection machine that if an officer or, excuse me, an item comes into our jail that we suspect might have some residue on it or if there's a package that we suspect might have drugs in it, we can sample the outside of the package without ever opening it up to further expose officers. And it will tell us whether there is a presence of drugs. The other device, it actually will tell us the formulation of the drug. So not only does it tell us whether there's methamphetamines or opioids present, it will tell us, you know, in addition to that, if those have been cut with other substances, it will give us a complete breakdown of everything that's contained within the sample. It's really a phenomenal device and one that we continue to learn with and plan to use our investigations. But then this additional twenty thousand, after we were success, or after we successfully received the one hundred and two thousand dollars, the, they contacted us and said, you are now eligible for some additional funding. With no requirement for additional application, they just basically said, we just need your acknowledgement. And they provided us with that. And that was used or will be used for our license plate readers that we recently acquired. So I'm, without going into any greater detail, and I'm more than happy to bring Major Moore up to answer any questions you might have specifically. That's a Reader's Digest version of what this was about.
I think council's question in my email to you was the process. The invoice was presented for that. And where's the money to come from?
Sure.
There's not any paperwork to follow that.
Sure, it's, let me make sure I understand your question. It, the type of grant that it is, is a reimbursement. So once we pay for the twenty thousand dollar item, then that grant pays us back and that goes back.
Okay, that was not explained exactly like that to me, so I was confused about the twenty thousand. But it is reimbursable. You just have to pay for the item ahead of time?
That's correct.
Okay.
So do you have a line you're paying that out of?
I don't know that we would have a line item that would support that right now.
So the invoice was sent to commissioners for payment, is that?
Yeah. Can you use your commissary and then just pay yourself back the reimbursement?
The payment, the repayment is done via electronic funds. So the money would go back into, the same way you did for the hundred and two thousand, would go back into the general fund.
Sounds like a deal for us. Okay. I understand that.
So you just want to keep it on our councils?
Council contingency.
Or one time?
Yeah, either one, one time or council contingency, or when we can do that. And then do you guys do the paperwork to get reimbursement?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it would make it easier or more complicated for me to, you know, pay for it out of commissary and then you get reimbursed and I come back to you and ask for reimbursement.
If it's coming back to general, it's fine.
Back to general, we didn't pay for it out of general.
Yeah, it's easier.
Let me ask a quick question, Mark. Don't, this is a grant, so wouldn't it have its own fund number?
Well, this one was already paid from county general and we were waiting for it like eight months to receive money back. It was taking a long time. And it was already taken from, I think, right now if it's only twenty thousand, there is no point to create it.
Is it because we've not gotten the money to begin with?
It's because it was already, we already got that one hundred and two thousand just recently back. And if it's only twenty thousand, probably now it's no point to start it.
So altogether, it's going to be a hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Yes. Hundred and two just came back after eight months. I think you spent it in July last year. And it just came back this month or last month.
So the cut of the chase was announced in the invoice that it would be paid, correct? So I'll motion to pay for it out of council one time. So the invoice can be paid then or?
Any other questions?
Yeah, you track the refunds, Randy? Looks like transfer, but do you get a notice that it's been paid?
Yeah, we get like an award letter or?
So you be sure we get paid back for it, that's my question.
Yes, yes. And we work in conjunction with the auditor's office to make sure that that happens.
I meet with them every month. And we talk about not only funding, but you know, how the program's going and how the system's being used. And we, that's always the top of the list, is make sure we're getting things submitted and getting paid back.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We got you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for commissioners' comments and our report from Mr. Higginbotham.
Good morning. You have your biweekly sheet before you and a couple changes since the last time we've met. Your generator project, you had started site work and getting ready to pay for the pad. Still expecting the generator by the end of the month and they'll have the, all the electrics in place. So that finally is starting to come to some forward motion. Chamber of Technology, as you know, we've got a new contractor to work on this. And he's been in, we've got the material ordered that to finish up the project. And we've given him four or five dates that his chambers will be open. He's been here all day sometime here in July. So again, this one looks like it, there's a little light at the end of the tunnel for this one to get completed as well. The courthouse marble entrance, last weekend, they did pour the concrete base for that. And then they'll come back this weekend and lay the marble. So that project will finish up after the holidays. The Coleman roof, that is going out for bid. So once we receive some numbers for that, we'll come back to you before any action by the commissioners for that so that you can consider those. And we would expect that sometime in August. Along with that, you'll notice that second line, item fourteen, we did add to that and it'll be a separate bid for consideration, the ceiling tiles and the lighting in there. If you've been in there, when we've had it since, that ceiling has been up there probably since it was built in the seventies. So you'll get to see both of those bids at the same time. In the expo hall HVAC is operational, still waiting for the punch list. The contractor from DLZ who was assigned to that has been in Europe and he just got back last week. So we'll get that punch list. Max, I think you had a question about the louvers in the Gable End on the south end of Expo Hall. Those were tied into the louvers that are on the west end. And that's where it brought fresh air into the units that were inside the building. So now those are outside. They've been disconnected, but we're going to put a control box back in so that just those louvers can be controlled for air ventilation. But they were part of the HVAC that went out.
So they can, like during the fair when the building's open, run those?
They will be, yeah.
Okay. Because that's what they were expressed to consider, they couldn't?
And before they, again, they were tied into the units that were inside. And that's how it brought fresh air in. But now they're outside, we don't need them, but we will use them for disventilation.
Yeah, okay. They'll be glad.
Yeah. And then we're still putting together some, the scope of the landscape and landscape project out here. Once commissioners have zeroed in on that, we'll bring it back to you for your eyes to put on it. And then as always, in the lower right-hand corner are your fund balances. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Steve, stay here for a minute. Beth, you want to come up for just a minute while I pass out the help information and talk about where we're at with the Main Street redevelopment project. The application deadline for that grant program was Monday. And so why don't you give a brief update, if you would, on where we're at with it?
As you know, one of the projects that, one of the programs that we've put together is a downtown revitalization program that businesses, for-profit businesses can apply for. We have a, there's a million dollars for the city of Richmond and there's a million dollars for the other communities that participated in this project program. And the deadline to receive the applications for these grants up to a hundred thousand dollars was July first. And I can get Beth up here to give you some numbers on how many businesses in the various communities have applied for grants that we will be considering over the next couple of weeks. According to our project guidelines, we've committed to a twenty-one business day turnaround for this. So sometime by the end of the month, we'll be awarding these funds to the businesses who have scored the highest on our scoring matrix. So Beth, would you give just some numbers as to the number of projects that's been applied?
Good morning. So I didn't bring that information with me, but I'm going off the top of my head. At the start of the day, Monday, I had ten applicants for the city of Richmond and the Devo district, which is all eligible. By the end of the day, I had thirty-two. And the mid, we had a midnight deadline, eleven fifty-nine. So I'm now more like forty-two applicants from Richmond. Maybe seven from Cambridge, one from Spring Grove, three from East Germantown, one from Dublin. Didn't receive anything from Milton and?
Economy.
Economy, got one from Economy. So I was very pleased that our smaller communities are participating. Right now, the volume of paperwork and getting into the scoring committee is kind of daunting. But I have a system going and we're working on it. And so far, I would say the majority of them are complete. There aren't a lot of questions. So we're just going to wade through it and start scoring. And a twenty-one day turnaround, I don't know who came up with that, but by golly, we'll make it work.
That was Steve Higginbotham.
Okay, thank you, Steve Higginbotham. We'll keep them moving. So it's going to be a competitive process. It's going to be interesting, it's going to be fun, and I hope it does what it's supposed to, revitalize our downtowns.
Any questions on that project?
And you'll report back to us?
We'll keep you posted.
We'll keep you posted.
So the awards could be anything up to a hundred thousand?
Correct.
Correct.
Thanks, Beth. Steve, do you want to give a brief update on the BLIT elimination grant program? Right, another project or program that the funds are being used for is BLIT elimination in the various participating communities. And this is for removal, not the fix-up, but the removal of structures that are beyond repair and have been considered and that are unsafe, under the unsafe building law. Again, there are several communities participating now. Again, there are several communities participating in that. And I think there've been, at this point, what, forty, forty-some structures throughout the county identified for this. The county has one identified up in Williamsburg. It is really a problematic property up there. You've seen it. It's, I think it was Gilligan's Islands boats were sitting out front. The city of Richmond has twenty, twenty or some. And then the commissioners have signed the agreement, interlocal agreement with the town of Economy. Because they don't have the resources to process unsafe building applications. And so we are using our unsafe building department to do that on their behalf. And they've identified one project in Economy too. So over the next couple of months, each of the communities that have these structures will be getting bids to tear them down. And then those will be submitted to the program for reimbursement to pay. And what's really neat about this is that, you know, there's a mechanism in place, a statute, to, for the communities to recover this if, in fact, the property owner does not pay for it. Because they're still going to be liable for the demolition costs, even though we're paying for it upfront. And you know, how that eventually would work its way through the, if they don't pay it, it gets a tax lien put on it and then it eventually goes to the sale. But if there are funds collected back, that goes back into their unsafe building fund. So it's kind of a perpetual thing that the communities then have some more money to address these structures. Any questions on that program?
Steve, there's two line items, each for three hundred and ninety, one out of county edit, one out of consolidated. Half of it going to be county and half city?
I'll address that. And it is edit, not ARPA. So we don't have the same timeline on it that we have on ARPA. The county is providing support for the help communities, the seven help communities to do this work. EDC has allocated that money from consolidated. And that is available to the help communities, but also to the communities that contribute to the consolidated edit funds. So for example, Hagerstown is not one of the help participants, but they do contribute to the consolidated edit program. So they're eligible to participate in this program as well. So yes, we're using those dollars with the current, the structures that have been identified. We don't think we'll use all that money. And if we don't, that money will just drop back into those, stay in those funds, the non-reverting funds. So we'll see where we're at. But that's how it's, how it would work totally. Other questions on those programs? We are moving forward. We're making, we're finalizing some of these projects. We've completed the playground programs. I'd probably give a little more attention to that project than the amount of money we've invested in it warrants. But I just think it's a neat project. And each one of those five communities has over a hundred thousand dollars that they're putting into a park project in those small towns. And we will start this summer, probably first in East Germantown, having some ribbon cuttings for those parks. It's going to be great. The, again, you've got the report, the help projects on one side of the page and the non-help projects, ARPA projects, on the other side. We're making progress on all of those. I just signed claims yesterday for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of payments. One of them on the courthouse. That project is completed now. I also sent you a list of some additional projects that commissioners are recommending for your consideration on that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds that are still not committed. There are, as we've alluded to already this morning, a number of other things that those dollars could be spent for. The bridge is one of those. But a couple of these projects in particular, I think, have some relationship to a project list that's already approved. One of those being at the First Bank Coleman Center where we're replacing the roof. But a companion project to that, which is not an approved project at this point, but we'll be getting bid for, is the ceiling. So again, as Steve said, it's a forty or fifty-year-old ceiling. The tiles are all discolored. The lights are the original lights that we're putting in that building. So we want to replace those lights with modern fixtures that will cut down on energy costs and make that building on interior look as nice as the exterior is looking. So we'll come back to you. I think I put a number of something around two hundred thousand dollars for that ceiling. That's the total additional funding we think will be for the roof and ceiling projects together. So we'll have actual numbers in the future and we'll come back to that. Another project that Steve alluded to is the landscaping and hardscaping of the campus here. The plan is to take out all of the crumbling bricks from the campus and replace some of that with concrete. Some of it will go back to grass. There are areas where there are very few people walking. It also will include a new ADA compatible entrance to the courthouse. It looks at this point like that might take another hundred thousand dollars above the five hundred thousand that is already approved. But we haven't done any value engineering yet to try to get that number down. But that was put in there as kind of a placeholder because we're still unsure of the exact cost of that project. Are there other questions about where we're at with any of the other park projects?
If the nine-one-one communication shortfall...
I put a quarter of a million. The number is still uncertain, very... He and I had a conversation. And so at that point, I'd already sent that out to you. Obviously, there are more line items, more possibilities than we actually have dollars for. So we need to take a look at that. We need to look at, are there other sources of funding for that communications project? Is there some value engineering that needs to be looked at in that area as well? So all of these moving parts, we need to continue to work on in the next sixty days and really make some decisions on what's going to come from ARPA. And are there other projects that we need to do, that need to be funded from other sources? So I expect we'll need to move beyond the ARPA for some of those.
Yeah, as our, the council's day is on to the committee that's working on that, of course. I think that number's going to probably be higher, but there is a lot of unknowns. But within the next sixty days, I think we're going to have a pretty good handle on that.
Good. So I think that's kind of our window to finalize all the ARPA issues, what projects we're going to fund at what level, so that we can get actual contracts in place by the end of the year, by the end of this December.
Also, a question about the firearms for the sheriff. That's a totally new thing that we've not talked about. I don't...
It is. And I think the sheriff has already left. I apologize. I didn't work out the details on that. We'll get more information for you on that. Again, I wanted to bring this to you. There are so many moving parts here still that we don't, I don't think we're ready for final decisions. But again, in the next thirty to sixty days, we need to make those final decisions. So I just wanted to put some potential expenditures in front of you.
So you're not asking for any action?
Not asking you to take any action. Those, the two I mentioned, the three I mentioned, the First Bank Coleman project, the campus project here on landscaping and hardscaping, and then the nine-one-one communications, we're likely to need additional funding. Again, whether it's ARPA or some other funding stream to look at for all three of those projects. And then there are others, some of those on the list, some of them not on the list. If we're good with that, let me switch quickly to a couple of other issues. One is that we had our renewal for casualty and liability insurance last week. That's a program that renews at the end of June each year. We were, the insurance company that has been insuring us for the past twelve months has gotten it out of the county market. In particular, they referenced that the liability issues around counties that have jails is one of our duties. That uncertainty is a challenge for some insurance companies. And so our insurance company said, we're not going to renew you because of those reasons. So we went out to the market and we did get multiple quotes. As you probably have been hearing in the news, insurance is going up significantly. We kind of put a placeholder in of like a thirty percent increase for budget purposes for 2025. We actually did significantly better than that, although it's still a significant increase, over a hundred thousand dollars a year, about eighteen percent as I understand it. And so we'll need to take that into account, not only for next year's budget, but for the remainder of this year as it took effect on Monday. We'll get the numbers and we've got time on that. We have money available. It's just, it won't be enough by the end of the year. But they did point out to us that the reason we were able to get multiple bids in many counties that they worked with did not. And our increase was significantly less than a lot of counties. The reason they looked at us favorably was in large measure because of our sheriff's department and the work that they do, the policies they put in place and going through accreditation for not only the jail, but the enforcement division. And the insurance companies viewed that very favorably. And actually, when they got multiple quotes, they used that information to get that to bid against each other. And they were competing for our business. So we got a significantly lower rate, a lower increase than a lot of counties have seen. And a lot of that is due to the sheriff's department. We gave them kudos. I'm sorry they're not here to hear this again. But that extra work that they've done, and we've heard over the years that this is really going to pay off in terms of liability. And we never see that in terms of, here's your discount because you've done all this work and are accredited. But they specifically, they are, our broker specifically singled that out as an issue that the insurance company shared with them that made them look favorably on us for our renewal. So it doesn't seem like it with the increase that we're going to need to absorb. But we did far better than many other counties because of the work that our sheriff and the jail staff and enforcement staff are doing on that.
Before we leave that, I had a comment. I think council needs to give some thought to, and the commissioners probably also are giving you a recommendation. But we are seeing, among other things, higher deductibles, even though we're getting multiple quotes in our, to the best of our ability, taking advantage of whatever element of competitiveness there is in the market. It's examples, markets fluctuate. We were told that cybersecurity, which was a very tight market, five, three, three years ago, four years ago, has really softened up considerably. However, with all the catastrophic casualty losses that have happened globally, property and casualties is going up remarkably. So one way to offset some of that, in particular with travelers or new carriers, with a higher deductible. In the recent weeks, you've been faced with some issues with that. Because when claims settle under the deductible, they typically have to be funded. And I'm not sure that we created an identifiable budgeted line item for that purpose. And so we kind of, I think one was twenty thousand dollars we had to come up with. And we will continue to have those claims, if you will, because cost of defense is included in that. And basically, you know, we settled one just this past week that was a total of around eight thousand. So those monies are going to have to come from someplace. And I don't think, at least I'm not aware, that we have an identifiable budgeted, which is going to be hard to predict, obviously, because we don't know when we're going to get claims. But that's a need that I think council needs to look at as well as the commissioners.
And we started that this year with, specifically for car deductibles. Every time a car's in a collision, and our deductible went up last year to twenty-five hundred. So we have a line item for that. We don't have a line item for some of these liability issues that we probably need to consider that. So good point, Ron. And we can make sure as we have our budget discussions that we look at that. It's, to some extent, it's one of those unknowable line items. Take a guess. If you don't, if you don't need it, you don't spend it. But if you do need it, it's nice to have an available line item for that that comes out of. So we'll be talking more about that.
So have you added that request in the budget request?
We have not, because we already submitted our budget before we had this conversation. But there is a line item for the automobiles, but not for liability. Some of you have heard already that we're going to have some changes in leadership at the health department. I'm sure they'll be coming to you asking for your consideration on those line items. I've been talking to Paul Reiter, who's the president of the board. And we'll be coming back to you at some point here in the next few weeks with recommendations on what those changes might be and asking for your support on that. Let's see. Ron Weidick, as you know, is retiring. I'll be talking to personnel about that replacement later today. But we really appreciate all that Ron has done in the Veteran Services Office. Excuse me. He's done a great job. And we wish him well in retirement. But we thank him for his service to the county, to the veterans here in the area.
When's that effective?
That is effective the end of July. That's all I have at this point. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I'd really prefer if you didn't have any. Anything? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody have any committee reports?
I do have one. The Drug Free Wayne County Partnership has their grant cycle open currently. So if anybody needs to apply for one of those grants, their cycle is open. And I think that's all that I have.
The Tax Abatement Committee met and reviewed the compliance with statement of benefits forms for ITD Sugar Creek. forms for ITD, Sugar Creek, and Teconic, and found that they were substantially in compliance with their original statement of benefits. And the full council wants to, the recommendation is to approve those. Full council wants to do that. I would make the recommendation that we deem that all three companies were substantially in compliance with their original statement of benefits.
I'll second that.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Hey, Beth, one more thing for WUR. We are having a latex paint recycling event in Hagerstown. I believe it's July 19. Is that right, Barry?
I thought it was Saturday, the 20th.
Saturday, the 20th.
Okay. Whatever that date is. At the Ace Hardware location. So chuck that out. We'll have advertising out for that and so forth. So.
Our next regular council meeting is August 7 at 8:00 a.m. And our workshop and actually budget hearing all day long will be July 17. We will be doing budget hearings starting at 8:00 a.m., going all day and going right into our workshop meeting, whatever time that occurs. It may not be all the way at 6 o'clock, hopefully. So that's all we have. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? I'm sure.